Clerk Seegrist, can you please take roll call?
Berninski.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Trustee Foster is not in attendance. Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seegrist is in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
And Snyderman.
Hello, everyone.
Great. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Public or which is?
Uh, indivisible, liberty, fall.
Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes from August 8th, 2023?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board approve the minutes from August 8th, 2023 as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Do you want to put that after the closed session?
Sure. That's a good idea. Okay, then, right now, we will go into, um, public comments on agenda items only. Three minutes for public comment on agenda items only. I'm going online first. We have four attendees. If you want to make public comment, please raise your hand.
Madam Supervisor, would it be, um, appropriate to move, potentially to go into closed session now and then hold public comment and payment of the bills when we return from closed session?
Sure.
Would you be okay with that? I don't know how the Board feels about that.
More people might come in then.
That makes sense.
Our traditional time for starting the meeting is at seven.
Okay, so can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Supervisor, I move to the Board go into closed session, uh, for the purpose of discussing pending litigation in the case of Stefani Hornstein v. Charter Township of Canton et al.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Trustee Berninski.
Berninski.
Roll call, or we can all say aye.
Berninski.
Yes.
Ganguly.
Yes.
Graham Hudak.
Yes.
Seegrist, yes. Slavens?
Yes.
Snyderman.
Yep.
Okay, so all go into closed session at 6:32. And just to let everybody know that, we will be in closed session and then start the regular meeting when we come out. 6:47, coming out. Can I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, thank you. We're out of closed session. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item G15?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the agenda as presented, adding item G15, and providing that the recognition be a floating item for when we are able to do so.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, can, uh, now, we will do public comment on agenda items only. I'm going to go to online again. And if you want to make public comment, if you're online, please raise your hand. Public comment. Online. All right, anyone in the room that wants to make public comment on agenda items only? Okay, please go up three minutes and state your name, and go ahead.
Good evening. Daniel McCoslin, uh, 328 North Hagerty Road. I want to comment on item G12. The potential purchase of the 50755 Cherry Hill Road Village Arts Factory. I don't see any, uh, prior meetings, study sessions, anything about this project, other than we're considering buying it for 2.1, 2.85, 31018, so almost 2.1 million dollars. I can't make a decision as a member of the public on that without knowing anything. So I guess I would be asking you, did we ever have any studies about it? Its impact to the, uh, legacy costs, the overhead? It just seems we're, we're, we're spending multi-million dollars here on an agenda item that there's no backup for it. I'm not against arts, or I'm not against, uh, community. It just seems... I looked that property up. It's assessed for less than $300,000. It seems a pretty big leap to buy something that's, uh, 2.1 million dollars. And we collect zero taxes on it currently. So I think it would also then just be a tax-free building owned by the township. So I guess if you could enlighten me, or tell me where I can find any said study about that before we just proceed and spend the money, be appreciative. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, we'll move to closed public comments. And then, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, why don't we move up G15 to the top? Do it right now, so we're...
Madam Supervisor, um... In the matter of Stefani Hornstein v. Canton Township et al. pending in the United States District Court, I move to approve the proposed settlement with the plaintiff and to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign any documents necessary to effect resolution of the pending, this pending lawsuit on behalf of Canton Township.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the consent calendar as presented. I'm going to continue to speak slowly while I do the minutes and notes from what we just did. Item C1, consider increasing blanket purchase order for Municipal Services Division. Item C2, consider increasing one blanket purchase order for Municipal Services. And that is for... Doesn't run. C3, consider approval of the 2023 budget adjustments. Fire. That's it.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And moving on to the general calendar, the first item we have is consider WTU a annual budget approval room. We have Aaron from Watuwa. Would like to go ahead and speak, please?
Good evening. You have before you tonight the, uh, proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. It has been previously reviewed by the WTU A Finance Committee, which includes your Finance Director, as well as the Finance Directors from the other two Townships. It was reviewed by the WTU A Board, uh, during a study session. It's scheduled to be approved at our next Board meeting next week, uh, pending approval of the Townships. I don't have a whole lot to say. Uh, it's a little larger increase than we've had over the past couple of years. The, the last two years, we were under 3% cumulatively. This year, we're up a bit. We're up at 5.5%. The bulk of that is in wastewater treatment costs. Uh, 83% of the increase is due to wastewater treatment costs. Uh, the, the remainder of the, um, increases are relatively minor, especially when you consider inflation. The only other thing I really want to point out is you'll note the lack of the, uh, bond debt service section. Uh, as of December last year, we paid off our final bond, and we're now, uh, debt-free. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Um, I was just gonna say that this is something that we do every year. So, and I appreciate that, uh, the bonds are paid off, so thank you.
Thanks, Aaron, for coming. The, uh, um, bond being paid off obviously brings down the, um, what goes into the cost increase. Is that correct?
The retirement of the bond impacts what the Township will have to pay in its water sewer fees to WTU A. Uh, it did, it didn't, sorry, did not show up directly on the approved budget. It's more of a, uh, note. It's a separate item that was, uh, relayed on to you, your staff, in setting the rates.
Okay. So I was just wondering if that was gonna kick in next year, this being the last year of, um, paying off the, that bond?
It, it will impact the amount that Canton Township pays to WTU A. It is not represented in this budget.
Right, okay. Okay, and what would you say is the biggest, um, factor for the, um, increase being a little bit larger?
Uh, 83% of the increase is due to wastewater treatment charges. That's really due to two things. One is inflation. Uh, obviously, we've had, uh, inflation for the past over year, uh, and that has started impacting YCUA. Uh, YCUA also discovered over the last year, uh, an error in the calculation, which has impacted our, um, cost to YCUA negatively for us, positively for them. Uh, it's, uh, it's already been corrected in this year's, and we're projec, and we're, we've built it into next year, uh, so it won't have an impact in next year's budget.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, before we make a motion, I just wanted, while, while Aaron is here, so Aaron works for Watuwa, which is our Wayne County Utilities Authority, and we share a wastewater treatment facility with Norfield Township, Plymouth Township, and Canton Township. Um, recently, some residents have come to us because a supervisor north of here is telling our residents that they're going to be affected by a wastewater treatment plant that is proposed to being built. And I, I'm asking if you could just give a status on what you understand to be the current status of that.
Uh, sure. I'll, I'll give a little bit of history. The first time I met with Salem Township was in 2001 regarding potentially providing service to Salem Township. Uh, we continued to meet annually for a couple of years, uh, until I terminated those discussions. We actually were, uh, the, the discussions restarted in the early 2010s. We were relatively, not close, but we were openly discussing the possibility of providing service to Salem Township, uh, provided that it was financially reasonable, uh, financially beneficial for the WTU A communities. That was prior to our most recent expansion. As I said, the, the talks were never really official, but they broke down when they saw what the costs would have to be. Uh, and that ended around 2017. Uh, and Salem decided at that time to go a different direction. They contracted with YCUA for, for wastewater treatment. They actually have a contract with YCUA to provide wastewater treatment. Uh, they designed a, uh, pump station and force main to get to YCUA. Uh, but they're, they've been unable to construct that force main because it has to go through Superior Township. Uh, my understanding is that, um, that potential construction is in court. Uh, it's been through several stages of court. Uh, and in the interim, Salem Township has applied to the, uh, Michigan Eagle, the environment, Great Lakes, and, or, and energy, uh, for a Part 41 permit to construct their own wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the last I heard, that permit review was on hold pending the result of the, the lawsuit.
So realistically, they already have a contract, like you were saying, with YWC, YCUA, and they would prefer to go there?
Yes. They would prefer, the, uh, as, as I've said, we, they've looked at, uh, they've been looking at the most economic way to provide services at least 2001. We actually tried to sell them our capacity in the Wayne County system when we were terminating that contract, but, uh, the projected cost for building a new sewer down Joy Road, which is a divider, divider road between Plymouth Township and Canton Township, so you have, uh, potentially, and in most areas, utilities of both Townships. That was gonna, going to be a much more costly construction than building it through the primarily dirt roads of Superior Township. Uh, so that was their primary driving force in deciding to go to YCUA. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to get the approval to build the, the facilities to YCUA, but they do have a contract with YCUA. Um, I think ultimately, uh, YCUA and, to some degree, WTU A would likely benefit from the introduction of additional flow. Uh, in wastewater treatment, most of the costs are, a very significant portion of the costs are fixed costs. So as you increase the flow that the treatment plant is handling, it decreases the rate, uh, that, that, that the users have to pay. So in general, as you get, uh, there's also an increased efficiency as you get up, uh, closer to the design capacity of the plant. So in general, as the plant accepts more flow, uh, users pay less per unit.
So, and that's in court right now to try to still make that pathway from where they are to YCUA?
That's, that's my understanding, yes. The, I, I guess I don't really keep that much on top of it since about 2017, when they opted to go to YCUA. Uh, but I have been told that it's in court. I know that the court did issue a ruling. Uh, I'm not a lawyer. I don't really understand what that ruling meant. Uh, I believe that it returned a portion of the suit back to the original court, uh, but nothing has been decided at this point, at least as far as I know.
Board members, have any questions? I know that a lot of residents are asking us questions.
Sorry, I just thought of this. Um, I think it was last year or the year before, several of us toured the facilities, um, at Watuwa, and, um, the one, uh, in the south part of Canton was under construction. Could you just give us a little update on, um, if that's done, and if we can come back and see it completed?
Sure. It, it was completed. It was, uh, substantially completed in, uh, December, about a year and a half ago. Uh, substantial completion just means we can use it. Uh, it, the final completion was just about a year ago. It was, uh, early August of, of last summer. It has not, we haven't needed to use it yet, which is good. Uh, it's, uh, additional storage, uh, and it's like having an auxiliary gas tank on your car. It's nice to have it, but you hope you don't get to the point where you use it. But I'd be happy to show you around the new facility. I, I just gave a tour last week, and it looks very nice.
Great, thank you.
Aaron, I forgot one more question that I had spoken to you about, which I think would enlighten the Board. So if a wastewater treatment plant were to go there, what would the flows be? Would it affect Canton directly, or does it flow in a different direction?
My understanding is that it would discharge into Fellows Creek, um, which does run through the northern portion of Canton Township, and then the eastern edge of Canton Township. That isn't necessarily a bad thing. Uh, for those of you who have been around a long time, you'll note that the Lower Rouge River is in much better shape today than it was 30 years ago. Uh, and that's primarily due to the effluent, the treated wastewater from the YCUA treatment plant. So, in general, when, when Eagle approves, uh, a wastewater treatment plant, that the treatment plant is required to discharge water that is at least as clean as the receiving body. So, I, I, I guess I can't speak specifically about what the impact would be on the Fellows Creek, but, uh, quite often, it has a positive impact. Uh, it would, it wouldn't be a large plant. Uh, I would expect it to be a bat, what they call a batch treatment plant, so they'd treat some and discharge a batch at a time rather than a continuous discharge. But I don't know that it's something that's inherently bad. At least potentially would, could have a positive impact on, on the creek.
I have a quick question. Um, when we had visited last time, you had mentioned that there's a lot of, you know, some of the input that you get is from the stormwater drains that we have. So, you know, with the rainfalls that are happening this year, has this, has that impacted? Or do you, have you, have you reached at capacity, or?
Uh, I, I don't like to answer that question due to Murphy's Law, but, uh, it, it's not actually storm sewers. It's, the, the primary impact is from footing drains of homes that are directly connected to the sanitary sewer system. Yes, they're still connected, a very large number. Yes, they impact us in rains. Really, the last several years, 2018, 2019, were, were pretty tricky times for us in the spring. Since then, we've, we've managed very well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can I have a motion on the item, please?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt, um, the following resolution. The attached resolution affirming approval of Watuwa's, WTU A's proposed budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2024.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. According to Section 7.5 of the Western Townships Utility Authority, Finance and Service Agreement with the Charter Townships of Canton, Norville, Plymouth Townships, Watuwa shall annually submit a budget to each of the Townships for its approval in August of each year. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Item G2, consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding Ford and Napier rezoning.
Supervisor. I move to hold, to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance of Planning Applic, Sub, Planning Application Number 070-RZ-7754, which rezones tax parcel number 0709-99-00... 02-702, uh, from RA, Rural Agricultural, to R2, Single Family Residential, and to hold a second reading on September 12, 2023.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to rezone parcel located at the southeast corner of Ford Road and Napier Road as listed parcel number from Rural Agricultural to R2, Single Family Residential, which is two units per acre. The subject property is 25 and a half acres and includes a creek in the southwest corner that is attributable to the Lower Rouge River. The site is vacant and has been used for agriculture. The applicant proposes to construct a detached, single-family residential development on the site if rezoning is approved. Add Dave?
Uh, Madam Supervisor, I do not have anything to add. However, the, the, the community planner, Patrick Sloan, is also here to answer any questions.
Okay, and so is our representative from MI Homes. Does the Board have any questions? Even?
Thank you. Um... So I don't know if Patrick wants to also come to a mic. I noticed the, um, Planning Commission had a couple of requests that they, um, tabled to vote the first time. And I was wondering if you could characterize those requests and how they were met?
Sure. There were a series of items that the Planning Commission had requested more information on based on the Planning Commission's deliberations of the case, as well as the public comment that was received at the June Planning Commission meeting. And, um, among those were, um, reviewing the traffic impact study from the applicant's traffic engineer by the Township's Traffic Engineering Consultant, Wade Trim. And so, uh, that had taken place in the interim between the June and August Planning Commission meetings. There were some other items that included looking at the impacts on the community wastewater treatment system, as well as the, uh, water system of the Township. And so, the Engineering Division had the Township's consultants, uh, run an analysis on the sewer system and the water system to determine what the impacts of the development could potentially be, given the limited information that we had. Uh, there were some other items that included, uh, obtaining the wetland impact study and getting an analysis on the impacts of the wetlands, or at least an analysis of what is known on the site for the wetlands. And so, the applicant had submitted a wetland impact study that answered those questions. And then, uh, the last two items were obtaining crash data from the Public Safety Department in terms of the intersection of Ford and Napier to see what the crash impacts have been and the data has been the last few years. I think they went back to 2017 to the present. And the last item was looking at the electrical capacity analysis by DTE. There were some comments at the public hearing in June about, um, service interruptions with DTE, power outages when there was no storm. So there were questions about what impact the development may have on, uh, the electrical grid. Unfortunately, when we had reached out to our service planner, the way that DTE does that analysis is that, before they run that analysis of a development's impact on the grid and on the, uh, local electrical service, they have to have the warranty deeds, they have to have an approved site plan. So many, many steps down the road until that analysis can be done by DTE. Uh, so off the top of my head, I think that was a summary of the information that was requested at the June meeting and was provided prior to the August meeting.
Um, I noticed that the, um, traffic study, including some, adding some turning lanes. Um, so I'm assuming in the later steps, we'll see, um, items to that effect. Is it?
Uh, correct. In the, um, in the application, the applicants have included a conceptual layout plan. And because this is a, a straight rezoning, it's not a conditional rezoning or anything like that, the layout plan is just that. It's conceptual. So the rezoning would be with the understanding that that layout plan is not part of the application and that there can't be conditions as part of, uh, the rezoning action. Uh, having said that, with the information that was obtained with the traffic impact study, it did indicate that having a left turn lane along Ford Road would help with the capacity issues, as well as the outbound drive from the development of having dedicated turn lanes going westbound and eastbound to help with any traffic backups into the development.
So would questions like about the fact that there's only a single entrance? And also, um, questions I have about, um, paths and perhaps connecting to the other sub, subdivisions that are on that same block? And then also, um, uh, perhaps, oh, and also, that it's conceptual what we're seeing here. So the models that were shown are just conceptual because they had, um, front-entry garages, which I don't think is consistent with that area. Is that all stuff to be discussed on, at later stages?
Uh, that's correct. At this point, it's just conceptual. Uh, should the rezoning be approved and the applicants move forward with a development plan, whether it's a planned development district application, or if they go straight to the site planner view stage, those are elements of the plan that will be discussed in further detail. And at that point, conditions can be added and design can be impacted by both the Planning Commission and the Township Board.
Okay, last question. Um, we've been doing some work on the master plan, and we've had some discussions about intersections like this one. Does this affect that work in terms of the master plan?
Um, that's a good question. I'm not sure if it does. At, at this point of the master plan analysis, we've been looking at different nodes throughout the community, some of which are existing nodes like, uh, local commercial types of nodes that are not along Ford Road and Michigan Avenue. And so, there's a series of nodes that we're looking at the community for local shopping and other, uh, local service opportunities. Um, this particular area, I'm not sure if we would be looking at that as anything other than residential or something more lower density in character, uh, like the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Michael?
The future land use map has this as low density, correct? Which is two units per acre with?
That's, that's correct.
And then, you're currently in the process of doing the master plan. Those discussions, has there been any discussion about changing the future land use map designation for this area being two, two acres per unit?
Um, for this particular area, uh, I don't think discussions have progressed to looking at any kind of density in this particular area. We are looking at areas in the northwest quadrant of the Township, which this area is technically in the northwest quadrant. We're thinking more, uh, north of Ford Road, uh, west of, west of Beck in terms of some of that area where there are, uh, there are local gravel roads, and, uh, it's much more rural out that way. We've been looking at that more in terms of where the density used to be prior to the 2017 master plan and, or the 2012 master plan to see if, um, looking at those previous plans, if it's worth maybe going back to those types of density. But in this particular area, we haven't gotten to any substantial discussions about any changes.
That's kind of consistent with my memory. We spent a good amount of time on that workshop, and at no point...
And at no point in time was there any discussion about not wanting to see potentially two units per acre in this area. I know M I Homes do a good product, comfortable with the product they've done in the township. It's consistent with the future land use map and consistent with what we want to do for our for our new future land use map as well. So I'm pretty, I I I am, I think I'm fairly supportive of the rezoning to
Anya?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, and Steve, I had very similar questions like Steven, and Patrick was able to answer them this morning. And I I am looking for the few, you know, you talked about the wetlands and things like that that will come in the future when they're doing the PDD.
That's correct. At that point, if they apply for a planned development district, looking at the wetland impacts and being able to have more discretion in terms of the design criteria, in terms of the layout and natural features preservation.
Okay, so I am, I'm okay as of now for what they have.
Yes, Patrick, there were actually two traffic impact studies done, right? There was the one, the one by Fishbeck, and then there was also a peer review one done by Wade Trim.
Correct. Fishbeck, they did the traffic impact study on behalf of the applicant. So they prepared that for M I Homes and the Wade Trim peer review was contracted by the township.
And it looks like in the Wade Trim one, they also are recommending a right turn lane.
I believe that was the development road going outbound in terms of having another, so there's not one single lane backing up in the morning when people are exiting. I think it was having that extra lane internally.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. And I will say that compared to a previous traffic impact study that we saw for a different development, actually, a gas station, I think it was, I'm very happy that they used current data from 2023 from May of this year. And they also made sure to do it during peak hours, especially considering that there's a school in the vicinity. So I appreciated that.
What else? All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. I believe we have our guests for the next, for the resolution. Is that correct? So can we please have? Thank you for coming. Can I please have Megan Donahue, Mark Jones, Jim Polterinus, Peyton Steele, and Keith Welty, please come to the front? Thank you. Come right here. You can face the audience. We're going to put you on the spot here. We're putting you on the spot. Thank you. Come on up. Thank you. So this is a resolution recognizing Megan Donahue, Mark Jones, Jim Polterinus, Peyton Steele, and Keith Welty. Whereas the Canton Police and Fire Departments recognizes the importance of heroic citizens and their involvement in the accomplishment of public safety. Whereas in July 18, 2023, Megan Donahue, Mark Jones, Jim Polterinus, Peyton Steele, and Keith Welty were at their homes located in the 3,500 block of South Canton Center Road when they heard a female neighbor screaming for help. Whereas these five neighbors ran from their homes towards the screams to discover a female sitting on the roof of her home with flames visible on the first floor. Whereas one neighbor quickly retrieved a ladder from his property and everyone assisted in getting the female down from the roof of the burning residence. Whereas firefighters and police officers arrived to find one victim who had made her way out from the first floor and the second victim who had been assisted safely to the ground by her neighbors. Whereas these five individuals demonstrated unwavering courage and compassion going above and beyond to make a positive impact on their neighbor's life. Resolve the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton upon recommendation of the Directors of Police and Fire Services to hereby recognize Megan Donahue, Mark Jones, Jim Polterinus, Peyton Steele, and Keith Welty for their commendable contribution to Canton community. Do you want to say anything?
No, I had said an idea afterwards. The individual who's on the roof is actually here today as well.
Very well.
I was moved by when I came and I saw the neighborhood. It's possible to happen and it's a lot of people don't think much of it. Guys, this quick action.
Want for a picture also?
Please in, guys.
They're behind you.
Lie down.
Good job.
Madam Supervisor, I will gladly second that resolution.
Port. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, or seconded by Clerk Seeger.
Made by you, seconded by me.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. That's nice.
Awesome.
Item G two, consider, oh, G three, sorry, G three. Consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding the Namedy rezoning.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance of planning application number 121-RZ-7853, which rezones tax parcel number 71-121-99-0007-000 from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential and to table for consideration an amendment for second reading on September 12, 2023.
Port. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. The applicant proposes to rezone parcel as listed, no address, located on the west side of Denton Road between Getty's Road and Michigan Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential. The subject property is 0.81 acres and is vacant. The applicant proposes to construct detached, single-family residential development on the site if the rezoning is approved. Okay, Dave, would you like to comment on that?
Madam Supervisor, no, I don't have any more comments on it, but the community planner, Patrick Sloan, is here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just to to clarify, the current zoning does not allow a house to be built on this land. Is that correct?
In a sense, it doesn't. Previously, the the parcel to the north and the subject parcel on tonight's agenda were in single ownership. And the zoning ordinance has a standard that states that if there are two or more adjacent lots and none of, or one or more of them don't meet the minimum lot area, then they can't be sold or transferred separately because they're considered one undivided lot. And so this particular lot had sold. And from a zoning standpoint, there's nothing that we can do to stop a sale. But the zoning ordinance standard applies nevertheless. So in order for the subject property owner to obtain a land use permit to build a home, the lot has to be compliant with the zoning ordinance. So this is a little bit of a of a cleanup after the fact of transferring. And prior to the sale, we had had discussions with the with the owner of the property at that time and let them know that what the rule in the zoning ordinance was, that the appropriate remedy would be to apply for rezoning and that this particular rezoning application is consistent with the future land use map of the master plan.
Okay, but the the basically, the the new owner wants to build a house on this property.
That's correct.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G four. Consider approving an animal sheltering agreement with the Michigan Humane Society.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the proposed agreement with Michigan Humane Society for animal sheltering services through December 31, 2025 in the total amount, annual amount of $46,925. $41,925 in flat amount, flat monthly fees plus $5,000 for ancillary specialty services as needed per contract.
Port. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The Police Department is requesting approval to enter into an animal sheltering agreement with the Michigan Humane Society. The proposed agreement consists of a flat monthly fee of $3,493.75 through December 31, 2025. Additional specialty service fees as needed are listed on the contract. In late 2014, the board approved entering into agreement with the Michigan Humane Society Westland Shelter to provide animal sheltering services for animals found in Canton. For the first time since the initial agreement in 2014, the flat fee is increasing by 698 per month. Specialty service fees will be included in the purchase order based on past history of use. Director Chad, do you have anything to add?
Just this falls under purview of the Police Department and only game in town for us to use. So this is why we chose Westland. We we contacted a vendor, a potential vendor in neighboring to our west, and they never called us back.
Questions from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G five, consider approving an agreement for emergency veterinary services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an agreement with Veterinary Emergency Services West, Service West, for an annual amount not to exceed $6,000. This agreement will be effective upon approval and valid through December 31, 2024 with an option for a two-year renewal at that time.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Police Department is requesting to enter into a service agreement with Veterinary Emergency Service West to receive and triage injured or sick animals during off-business hours of the Michigan Humane Society. This annual agreement would be for an amount not to exceed 6,000 per year. Due to a change in the hours of the Michigan Humane Society Veterinary Services is the Westland Shelter, the department is requesting to enter into an after-business hours agreement with Veterinary Emergency Services located on Ann Arbor Road in Plymouth. With this agreement, V S, V E S W would accept and triage and or sick animals recovered during off-business hours of the Michigan Humane Society Westland Shelter. Triage care is defined as minor wound care stabilization. V E S W estimates the cost per incident to be $200 to $300. Charges will be billed to the township on a month basis as services are received. Director Chad, do you anything, add anything?
Yes, this is important because of the change of service and there's really no other way to talk about in terms of vet or get a pet to a vet during those after-hours business. You have police officers who encourage and try to get the actual owner to take care of the animal. If we can't find them, we have to find a way to stabilize the pet.
Questions or comments? Kate?
We've not done this before, and this is due to a change in hours at the Humane Society.
Correct.
Okay, I guess I'm I saw, and you said that this is just minor wound care stabiliz, and stabilization of the animal. And then after that occurs, and hopefully the animal is okay in the hours after that happens and and the Humane Society opens. But then the the intent would be to take the the animal or the pet to the Humane Society to, in case they need further treatment.
That's correct. And also, hopefully, you know, overnight and as people wake up in the morning, usually contact with the owner somehow by then. And that usually turns, that would turn into them taking care of their own pet.
Okay, yeah, would there be, if the owner is found, then there would be an attempt to recoup the costs from them?
Hopefully, the vendor would be able to work that out and also us, because we wouldn't have paid that bill at that point.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering because we we have dogs at our house and I know that emergency treatment is very expensive. And I'm thinking $6,000 is not, is not going to go very far. But if we're limiting it to just the, you know, the minor wound care and stabilization, then hopefully it'll go farther than I think.
Surprised a lot of police departments that are responsible for this locally. So this was the only resolution we could come up with.
But I thank you for thinking of the animals when the Humane Society is closed, so.
Port. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the
Wait, just one comment. Yeah, I've used them and they've been very responsive and helpful late at night or early in the morning when I've had an issue with a pet. So I'm glad you took, vetted them and chose them.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G six, consider approving an extension to the embedded social worker contract with Hagera Health.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an extension to the embedded social worker contract with Hagera Health Incorporated to run through November 30 of 2023.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. The Police Department is requesting an extension through November 30, 2023 on its contract with Hagera Health Incorporated for embedded social worker services. Hagera has agreed to this extension with the existing terms and conditions of the agreement. Chad, do you want to add anything?
Yes, follow up to this pilot program. It's gone over two years now. Last night, the mayor commission saw a request from the Police Department H R supported by the supervisor's office for a direct hire position. So this will allow us to set up a process, if approved by the board, to go into a direct hire for the embedded clinician services with the Police Department.
That we have approximately, we have over 400 cases now referrals since
Yes, it's growing every day. It's
Our residents are using and the police are using. Health increases in our community. Comments or questions from anyone? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G seven, consider a request to approve a letter of agreement between Canton Township and the Police Officers Association of Canton Police Officers Association of Michigan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the letter of agreement between Canton Township and the P O A C slash P O A M to provide for the establishment of a promotional process for the positions of telecommunications supervisor.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township is always striving for good rapport with its labor force. Toward this end, a letter of agreement was reached between Canton Township and the Police Officers Association of Canton to establish a promotional process for the Police Department's new telecommunications supervisor positions to be classified in the Canton Command Officers Association. Chief Bowden, do you want to add anything?
Yes, this letter of agreement allows, it provides a vehicle, it's a path for the process to occur in the coming weeks and months. Labor teams in the township, it looks like we'll have another proposal for you to look at. It'll look very similar to what you saw May 2 for the study session with our expansion of our dispatch center.
Anyone? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eight, consider approving a three-year animal control services contract. We like animals today.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a three-year animal control contract with the option to extend an additional three years to Varmint Police Incorporated of Willis, Michigan in the amount of $6,6412 a month, which is $72,769.53 annually from August 1 of 2023 to July 31 of 2026.
Port. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township solicited bids for contracted animal control Canton Township solicited bids for contracted animal control services for the police department. One vendor, Varmint Police, submitted a flat rate bid of six thousand sixty four dollars and twelve cents per month, seventy two thousand seven hundred sixty nine dollars fifty three cents annually. The police department is recommending Varmint Police be awarded the three-year service contract with the option to extend for an additional three-year. So this, Varmint Police agrees to continue to provide a trained animal control officer to urgently respond to animal complaints utilizing efficient and humane means, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Varmint Police also provides animal transportation to either a designated shelter, Humane Society, or rehab center. Privatization of animal control is the most effective way of providing high-level animal control service to the community as opposed to the costs associated with utilizing hiring township personnel to handle animal control. Chief Chad, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes, uh, they were the only, only bidder. It's the first time they've raised their cost in a very long time, as you saw in the write-up. Uh, also, we were looking, because we were concerned that the price was going to go up very high about a potential direct hire type situation, but it would be financially responsible at this point.
Questions or comments?
Sorry, um, I think the math might be off just slightly on this, um, by about nine cents. Um, but anyway, I will say that I have seen, um, Ms. Sutherland, I think that's her name, um, posting on Facebook, looking for owners of dogs that she's found or other pets, and, um, I think she's been doing a very diligent job trying to find owners, so, um, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I just, uh, might have been a slight math error.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider approving the purchase of Graykey from Gray Shift LLC and accept a donation from the Operation Underground Railroad toward the purchase.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of Graykey Essential with one year annual license in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred twenty dollars and accept a donation from the nonprofit organization Operation Underground Railroad in the amount of five thousand two hundred sixty dollars and twenty-five cents to be applied towards the fourteen thousand one hundred twenty dollars and paid directly to Gray Shift LLC.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The police department is requesting to purchase Graykey Essential with Artifact IQ, mobile extraction device for cell phone forensics in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred twenty dollars. This includes the initial purchase of hardware and licensing. Gray Shift LLC is the sole source provider of Graykey with no competitors offering this product line. Graykey is only available to government agencies of law enforcement, public safety, and national defense. The department has also secured a donation from the nonprofit organization Operation Underground Railroad in the amount of five thousand two hundred sixty dollars and twenty-five cents to be paid directly to Gray Shift LLC for the purchase of this product. Cell phone forensics are being utilized by law enforcement investigators as a tool for effectively and efficiently event, investigating crime. Uh, Chief Chad, do you want to add anything?
Yes, uh, the nonprofit helps, uh, they've done a lot of work with, uh, groups like the Human Trafficking Commission that I was assigned to by the governor, they, they support some of those concepts with sex trafficking and human trafficking, but the, uh, Graykey, um, it's the only game in town. Um, to unlock phones with a search warrant, sometimes it takes hours, days, it even takes, um, sometimes up to a year and a half, and some of that information that is on that phone is viable to the investigation. Wouldn't be able to do it without this tool. Right now, we work with consortiums, one other agency, or two agencies sometimes, um, Michigan State Police in Dearborn to accomplish the task, but as this community grows, the demand is, um, overwhelming for us to continue to use those other agencies.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G ten, consider approval of purchase order to O H M Advisors for Cherry Hill Village Square Development.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve a purchase order to O H M Advisors at three four zero 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 Plymouth Road in Livonia, Michigan, four eight one five zero for professional engineering services for the initial phase of the Cherry Hill Village Square Development. A purchase order will be submitted in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to be paid from the account number four zero four dash seven two seven dot eight zero one underscore zero zero five zero, professional services.
Or? Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Through a combination of ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act, insurance proceeds, park mileage funds, and existing fund balance, Canton is able to invest nine and a half million dollars towards the Canton Town Square project at Cherry Hill Village. Town Square project will invest in some of the community's most treasured assets, including the Village Square Park, Historic Arts Factory Building, Factory Park, Cherry Hill School, Preservation Park, Trails, public parking improvements, wayfinding and programming in the town square. O H M Advisors have provided planning services to help develop the associated concepts to date. Canton team members and O H M Advisors have now identified the next steps and initial phases of the project, which includes additional concept planning, topographic survey, detention pond conversion, parking lot design, and bidding assistance. O H M has played a key instrumental role in developing the Cherry Hill Village Square Project concept. To continue this significant momentum, staff are requesting the bidding process be waived and to approve a purchase order to O H M Advisors for these services with a total not to exceed a fee of one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred. So through the Wayne County ARPA agreement, Canton will coordinate the work to design and develop the square surrounding the Cherry Hill School, Factory Community Center, Preservation Park, Trails Network Marketing and Promotion, and Wayfinding. So Director LaFever, do you want to speak to this?
This is, uh, next big step and a great process, so we've, uh, been working through a lot of the concept planning, and we're finally to a point where we're ready to award some work and get some bid, bid documents put together, and, uh, hopefully move some dirt this winter. We've, we've been building up this for a long time, there's a lot of great momentum for the project, um, we're getting a lot of attention for it, so this is great, this is, this would be the next step towards, uh, moving some dirt and making some action happen out in the village.
Could you, and could you kind of describe a little bit more about what the, what they're going to be doing at this phase?
Absolutely, so we're actually calling this Phase Zero, uh, because this is kind of the predecessor to, uh, kind of the first key parts of the project, so we've acquired some, some property out there. Uh, we know before we really start doing anything, we've got to be prepared for the transition of, of the area, so, um, this will help us get some designs going for things such as parking, we know parking is a challenge for everybody in the village area, so this will kind of be the first steps towards some design for that. Uh, it's also going to help us with some stormwater management out there, so this is the, like I said, it's kind of the precursor, Phase Zero, uh, the staging for everything that's to come afterwards, so, uh, it's kind of a pivotal phase. So O H M has been a part of this process along the way with developing concepts, and, uh, we felt, just with their knowledge and the investment that we've already made with them, that this would be, uh, a nice transition into moving the project forward.
What is the timing of this phase?
Uh, so, once awarded, uh, their, O H M is ready to get rolling right away, uh, they'll start putting some of these, uh, specifications together, and their, their goal is to be moving dirt, you know, hopefully by the end of this year and over through the course of the winter.
Whatever they come up with, everybody will still, we will look it over.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah, this is, there's additional planning involved in this process, so, uh, yeah, there are certainly some steps for input, uh, we've got to, you know, have some working sessions, but abs- absolutely, yep.
Questions or comments? Tanya?
So, um, John, uh, we had a presentation from O H M in, I think in April, where they gave us an initial, you know, concept, and the community gave some feedback, and I think you have some, had some community sessions after that, too. So we were just wondering, it's been like four months after that, there was some feedback given, uh, it would be nice to have a study session or something like that where the board can see what changes they incorporated based on the feedback that was given to them, because, you know, we are making a considerable amount of investment in this project, and a study session is open to the public, so we can see what's going on and-
Yep, exactly, yeah, absolutely, um, I, I agree, that'd be a, a great step, we've all had a lot of conversations in the months since then, and, uh, a lot of the master, community master planning process has been happening, be kind of, I won't say behind-the-scenes, there've been public sessions, um, and we've been taking some of that feedback and incorporating that into the plan, and I know several of you were a part of those as well, so, um, and speaking with some staff today, I, absolutely, I, I think we're overdue for that, and I look forward to being able to kind of share some of the conversations that have taken place and where we're at with it, and, uh, get your feedback and input on, on next steps.
Okay, and maybe we can do this on like a quarterly basis as the project progresses, so, you know, we have done that in the past with other things.
Yeah, definitely, I, this, obviously, the size and scope of this project and the long-term benefit that's, this is going to bring to the community, it definitely warrants that attention, so I, I would love the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Steven?
Uh, yeah, there's going to be a lot of moving parts here coming in the next couple of years, and so it would be good to, uh, have, uh, frequent sessions on what's going on, um, I kind of equated to the building of the last, the latest fire station that, um, Director Stockline took us through, and, uh, keeping us up to date every three, four months or so is, is, uh, very helpful for us to know what's going on, so I appreciate, this is very exciting, um, it combines, you know, so many different parts of Cherry Hill Village, and this greater plan that we've partnered with the county on is, is going to be great, and, um, and making it a, a place where people, uh, come to work and play and live is, is something that's going to take a lot of effort on yours and everyone else involves part, so, thank you.
Michael?
I just want to reiterate or re-up both of those comments, um, from my colleagues, um, and then kind of dovetail into, um, the feedback we got on the master plan advisory, um, some of the feedback we've gotten from the, from the public was very reassuring about this project in particular. One, seeing, um, the Cherry Hill Village, um, name pop up routinely, uh, from the residents, and then seeing, um, this notion of a walkable downtown. Additionally, um, the survey results we got back that showed that eighty-five percent of Canton residents routinely travel to downtown Plymouth to shop. I would love to get those residents to stay in Canton Township to shop. Also, um, the number one request from residents being a bookstore. If we're going to have a bookstore in Canton, this Village Square, um, would be the place to have that. Additionally, art galleries was the number two item that Canton residents had said that they wanted, and, um, there's other, other agenda items up here that, that talk about kind of the, the delivery of arts and the creation of art galleries for the, for the public as well. So I think it's really cool, um, that we were able to kind of take the, the ARPA funds from ourselves and from the county and do some serious work in kind of closing this, at this point, almost a, almost a three-decade-long process, um, and accelerating that, and, I'm really looking forward to this, I know, from an economic development standpoint, I know Gavin's been working really hard about recruiting businesses into some of the more vacant areas, um, in the village. I, I, I ran some numbers today looking at some of the undeveloped parcels in the village, and seeing that we currently make about sixteen thousand dollars in tax revenue off of them a year, which is extremely underwhelming, because just one mixed-use development in Cherry Hill Village produces twice to three times that, um, and that, this is potentially seven acres, seven acres of undeveloped parcels in the village that's, you know, just sitting there, unused, that people can't walk to, can't engage in any type of community activity at, um, so it's, um, it's pretty exciting to see, it's big stuff, and-
I don't, I don't think people realize the opportunities that are out there for this community and what, what the future will hold for this project, it's, it's something that I don't think we can even kind of conceptualize, you know, long-term what this will do for Canton.
Yes, Diane?
I'll reiterate, I'll be quick though, too.
Oh, sure.
I have to agree with, with my colleagues have said as well, and this is very, very exciting. I know just the few events that we've had down there, rally on the ridge, so many people come and they, people want more activities down there, and I know businesses are really excited to move in, so it is, it's going to help with our revenue a lot, and it's going to help with the community a lot, so I'm looking really-
Yeah, we're receiving, I know it's been mentioned, but we're receiving a significant amount of interest, uh, commercial, you know, from the private, private sector, so it's, it's ready to go, we're, I was going to include my update later, but obviously, th- this weekend has a Cherry Hill Village Festival, and anybody who has any doubts about the potential of the village area should come out on Saturday and Sunday, um, we'll probably see about eight thousand people in two days this weekend, so, uh, it'll be a nice, uh, image of what's to come.
So, um, just ditto to everything everybody else said.
Any other ditos? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eleven, consider approval of resolution approving settlement agreement in opioid litigation involving Walgreens.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the resolution approving the settlement agreement in opioid litigation involving Walgreens, and authorize the township supervisors to sign any necessary documents in order to effectuate this settlement.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The board has been asked to adopt a resolution approving participation in the national settlement agreement in ongoing opioid litigation with manufacturers and distributors of opioids. The settlement agreement is with Walgreens for their role on the opioid epidemic. December two thousand seventeen, the Board of Trustees authorized the filing of a lawsuit on Canton's behalf against various opioid manufacturers and distributors. Canton suit was then merged with the number of lawsuits already pending as a part of a nationwide class action. Since that time, a number of the defendants have gone out of business and/or filed bankruptcy. The Michigan Department of Attorney General has reached a settlement with Walgreens Pharmacy regarding opioids. This settlement allows Michigan and eligible local governments to participate in the Walgreens National Settlement, the deadline to submit the participation form is September sixth. Uh, Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
Um, just that this is, um, Walgreens being added to a long list of, uh, companies that, uh, either distributed or, uh, manufactured opioids, uh, in the country over the past two decades, um, and, um, this is just a request for the board to, uh, participate in the settlement involving Walgreens, as it has with past settlements involving, uh, other manufacturers and distributors of opioids.
Just, um, a quick question, I see there's like a fraction of a percentage that our share is, do you have any estimate as to how much it would be? In, in dollars?
Uh, yes, I, I believe it will be in the ten to twenty thousand dollar range.
Thank you.
All those, Michael?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a statement, one, I am extremely grateful to the township, to the supervisor's office, for aggressively going after and being involved in these settlements. We, as a society, we as a community, have spent a substantial amount of money from a public safety standpoint, um, trying to deal with the oversubscribing of opioids and what that did to our society, a lot of, um, the consequences of that, um, are leading to some of the issues that we currently have today, and I'm just grateful that we're doing it, and I, and I'm grateful there's a financial penalty, because it was a financial incentive that requ- that, that resulted in a substantial amount of pharmaceutical companies, obviously, um, the, um, the, the drugstores, and then a lot of doctors as well, um, in providing, um, painkillers for people that did not need painkillers, and, um, and I'm hoping that the financial penalties will change those behaviors, uh, without consequences, those actions don't change, and it will be hard to really estimate what the damage will be to our society, um, due to the number of people who became legal drug abusers because of the over-prescribing of opioids. Disgusting.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G twelve, consider purchase of property located at five oh seven five five Cherry Hill Road, commonly referred to as the Village Arts Factory.
Madam Supervisor, I'd like to take this moment to request that the board allow me to recuse myself due to a conflict of interest as I am on the Board of Directors for the Village Arts Factory or the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities, and I'm also elected as a Canton Township.
Steve?
Madam Supervi- excuse me, Madam Supervisor, I move to recuse Michael Seeger from the vote on this.
Support.
Made by Clerk Secret Kate Bruninsky and is supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, the motion, anyone, could someone read the motion?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of the property at five zero seven five five Cherry Hill Road for the amount not to exceed two million eighty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and eighteen cents and approve the following budget amendment. Increase revenues listed in our packet for two million... Or, I'm sorry, two million eighty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and increase capital by two million eighty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars. Further move to recommit the fund balance previously committed for the fire station number four in the amount of two million to the fund, to fund the purchase of this property and authorize the township supervisor to sign all of the necessary documents to finalize the sale pending the results of an environmental assessment on the property and final improvement of legal counsel.
Or... Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The board is being asked to consider purchasing the property located at five oh seven five five Cherry Hill Road, tax ID is listed, plus an additional twelve acres of land with fund balance resulting from American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. This is commonly referred to as the Village Arts Factory and its surrounding twelve acres, eleven point eight three to be exact. The proposed sale price for the property and all of the buildings, including costs, is two million eighty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and eighteen cents. The township board previously committed fund balance resulting from the ARPA Act in the amount of two million dollars for the construction of a fourth fire station. Since that time, the township has received notification of a grant in excess of seven million dollars for the construction of a fourth fire station. Ranji Puri helped us with that, thank you. As a result, we are asking the board to reallocate those dollars for this purchase. Village Arts Factory is located just one block west of the Village Theater at Cherry Hill in the heart of Canton's Town Square. Their recently opened arts warehouse is now a vibrant space that integrates arts, culture, and creativity and encourages commercial and economic revitalization in the square, and we were just speaking about it with Director LaPevere. Located in the heart of Cherry Hill Village, the Village Arts Factory serves as a nexus for the arts, culture, music, humanities, and community engagement. The historic multipurpose arts studio complex is dedicated to providing equitable, innovative, and inclusive arts programming and experiences for all Canton residents to enjoy. The purchase of this property will guarantee all Canton residents have the opportunity to enjoy arts and humanities programming in the future with the flagship location for the arts in the heart of the Canton Township Square. Currently, in, in the Arts Factory, there are tenants that reside there, local artists, and so we will be look, working out a lease agreement in the future, after this purchase in the nearby future. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to speak to anything?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Ben?
Well, um, I'll add on to what I said on the last Cherry Hill Village action item that we had in front of us, that this is all part of a greater plan to revitalize the district. I'm very excited for this to occur and we move forward with this. It's all part of a, a plan that we started really three years ago when we put together our vision for this community. We had many sessions, work sessions that basically laid out what we would like to do, and now that the fact that we, with our partners from Lansing, from Wayne County, from the federal government, that we've been able, through the work of many parties in, in the supervisor's office, clerk and treasurer, and to those other organizations, have been able to fund this vision. And I think it's gonna be exciting for this community in the years to come.
I just want, I just wanted to say that the, you know, the buildings, they've renovated the Village Arts Factory, it's a beautiful building now. And I know we have the dormitory, too, two buildings that, when it was first taken over that land, it was unlivable. And so it's beautiful what we are obtaining now, plus the third buil- building. And I was just curious, I know there was appraisal done some time ago, if you want to speak on the...
Yes, yes, that's correct, and this is public information that the Village Arts Factory has in its tax return. The buildings alone are valued at about three and a half million dollars on the property. And the surrounding land is not included in that, but with the surrounding land, the, the appraised value is, is in, is in that range slightly higher.
I have a quick question, Deputy Supervisor. So this, this basically entails the Village Arts Factory and the dormitory?
And the warehouse.
And all the land around.
Yes, it's the entire campus and all the buildings.
Entire campus, yeah. So, yeah, I, I think that would, basically, I think, in the plans that we have for the Cherry Hill Village Square, I think that kind of builds into that. And we received funds from Wayne County for parts of this complex to be developed and, and that was the condition that Wayne County has on us, that we develop a community place, a community center there. So I think this kind of builds into, as Steven said, this kind of builds into what we are planning to do for the future, for the downtown, that we are trying to develop.
And if I could just add one more thing, you know, I know that, I don't know if this has been talked about publicly or not, but I know that the board has been concerned about Canton kind of being a victim of its own success when it comes to the summit and crowding at the summit and load management issues for programming and services at the summit. You know, as part of the plan for the Village Arts Factory campus, there will be a community center developed in that corner building to allow for, you know, additional programming for the community. So I just wanted to, to add that in and speak to that.
Yeah, I just, Joe, you stole my point, but that's all right.
Sorry.
But just wanted to agree with everybody else again. This is the sort of, I, I won't say culmination because we're not done, but this is one step further in our plan that we've been talking about for, oh, two or three years now, and it's really exciting. I was just at the Village Arts Factory on Sunday doing a little workshop and it's, it's just a fun place to go and I'm looking forward to even more fun there. And like Joe said, the summit is just bursting in its seams and we need more places for our residents to enjoy what Canton's all about.
Okay, great, like you said, we've been speaking a lot about Cherry Hill Village today and like ditto with everybody, we're adding on to what we're doing and just the acreage alone, there's even plans in the future for doing a park with those twelve acres, so there's a lot, lot, lot there and I think we all said a lot. All right, let's see. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G thirteen, consider award of a contract to AKT Peerless Environmental Services to perform an environmental assessment at the Village Arts Factory Warehouse, five oh seven five five Cherry Hill.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and award a contract for environmental assessment at five zero seven five five Cherry Hill to AKT Peerless Environmental Services, two two seven two five Orchard Lake Road, Farmington, Michigan, four eight three three six, in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred fifty dollars to be paid from the account number, from the account four zero four dash two, ooh, four zero four dash seven two seven dot eight zero one underscore zero zero five zero, Professional Services.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. Canton Township is in the process of procuring the Village Arts Factory Warehouse, five oh seven five five Cherry Hill and all the land surrounding prior to closing on the purchase and as a component of the township's due diligence process, the township is seeking to perform an environmental assessment of the property. The assessment would include Phase One environmental site assessment, Phase Two environmental site assessment, baseline environmental assessment, and a due care plan. Based upon the information and data provided by the assessment, the township may take further steps to remedy any onsite environment at a later date. To accomplish the assessment, AKT Peerless Environmental Services has provided a quote of seventeen thousand five hundred fifty dollars to perform the work. AKT Peerless Environmental Services has provided timely and accurate services for the township in the past. Okay, Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything to that?
Just that this is a part of the due diligence process and the purchase of the twelve acres, the Village Arts Factory campus. Yeah, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Dave, do you have anything? I know you've been working hard on this.
No, I, I was working with the, with Joe on this one too, so AKT was involved in some of the other work that we were doing in Cherry Hill Village, so I know that they work with the Down River Community Conference on brownfield redevelopment sites, so they have extensive experience in this field. I know it's, it's part of due diligence here.
Questions or comments?
Question, which is more of a, now that Deputy Dave at the Merritt Commission has been given the role of interim director of MSD, do we have to call him interim Director Dave as opposed to Deputy Dave going forward?
I like Deputy Dave.
Deputy Dave's got ring to it.
Want to keep it?
It's, it's September ninth. Jade is still a director.
Oh, okay. Never mind Deputy Dave, I'm sorry.
Now and then I'll come up with something else, there we go.
Director Dave.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, let me see. Oh, the last one is item G fourteen, consider FOIA twenty-three four fifty-seven second appeal.
I prefer to not make a motion on this, starting point.
Sure. On Tuesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Public Safety Records Department received a fax FOIA appeal from the Sam Bernstein Law Firm in regards to the partial denial of their FOIA request twenty-three four fifty-seven. We are asking the board to consider this appeal to the denial issued on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Clerk Seeger, do you want to comment?
I have not been involved in this at any level, primarily because this is an extension of the previous FOIA from the Sam Bernstein, appeal from the Sam Bernstein Law Firm. They had asked for witness names. The board did agree to provide that information to the firm. They then, I believe, initially followed up with the FOIA coordinator, who does work in the clerk's office, and asked for the dog owner's name, at which point we treated that as an additional FOIA request, and that was submitted to Public Safety because the police report is a public safety record. But I believe that Chief Chad would be the person responsible for what happened from that point.
Yes, um, there's usually a lot of concern when information from a police report that's driven from what we call CIGIS information, which is criminal justice information systems, lean, et cetera. But in this circumstance, the actual name was driven by a police report released by Sam Bernstein's office. So this week, my best recollection of the conversation our supervisor in charge of lean had with the lean auditors in the state police, which is governed by the FBI, stated that name that was exposed during this process was because the attorney for the client, whose name was exposed, was responsible for that, not for us, and essentially not a lean violation. That's the only concern we would have is if we somehow, we would be responsible for offering CIGIS information publicly outside the, the lean rules, the CIGIS rules, and laws of the state of Michigan.
Questions about, go ahead, Michael?
So my question would be, in according to the appeal by the Sam Bernstein Law Firm, the FOIA for the police report is asking for the victim's name, which I believe they indicate was voluntary, or not the victim's name, the dog owner's name. And I believe the dog owner's name was voluntarily given to the officer by the dog owner. Now, what's challenging is the report that I've got in front of me is also redacted, and so it makes reading the report extremely difficult, which also kind of makes being the appellate body for the appeal very difficult as well. We had a lot of discussion last time about emails, which proved out, proved to not be relevant because their request was not for emails and that was not redacted. But I was unable to discern that because of the, the police report in front of me was redacted internally. So I hope that's something we kind of get some, some kind of internal understanding on, because it's very challenging to be the appellate body if you don't have all the relevant facts and circumstances when you're hearing an appeal. That aside, I guess my question would be, what role does lean, which is background information, have to do with the name of a dog owner when the, when that information was granted to the responding officer by the, by the dog owner? To me, that, I don't understand how that would be background information.
My understanding is of CIGIS rules, while they're not always logical in this form especially, is if that information is driven from that computer line, it abstracts from a system housed essentially, let's say, in Lansing or in Washington DC, then information extrapolates into a report, that would mean that information on a police report was technically from a lean line. There's two ways that information can be put on a police report, too, is one, where you don't use the lean line and you write it in, for lack of better terms, or type it in, in today's terms. So it's my understanding to this, at this point, the police department's not responsible for any type of lean violation or the clerk's office by offering this information.
Okay, so the position of records, public safety records was to deny the, the giving the name because it would warrant an unreasonable invasion of, of privacy for the individual dog owner?
Which is, I think, calls for a meeting to have some uniformity about what is an invasion of privacy with counsel. What I'm most concerned with is information being offered, which is a crime.
Okay, but in this case, the name of the owner was given to the officer by the, by the, by the, by the owner of the dog.
That's my understanding is.
And the position of the, the law firm is that, that was them voluntarily offering that up. And so the notion that that would be an unwarranted invasion of privacy, according to the appellate, is that there, there is no unwarranted invasion of privacy.
Based on that context, I agree.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
So if I'm following the discussion correctly, it seems like it's okay to give this information if it's not in the method that you are referring to, not being an expert in your systems, that we can provide that information without doing it the way that would be...
That's correct, and for, you know, I didn't know this was up this, today until just actually a moment ago, but the, as long as that information doesn't come from a lean line, I think that would be your discretion whether or not the... I think that would be your discretion whether or not the, want to offer that name publicly.
Can we, do we need to have that in the motion, or can we, if we chose to grant the appeal and allow the name to be transferred, that's sufficient and it'll be transferred in a way to your department's approval?
I would defer to the Clerk. Question?
Maybe I'm not asking the right question, but I was just wondering if we chose to grant the appeal that in the motion that we don't have to specify the method that the name will be transferred to the Bernstein Law Firm? Or do we have to specify that it won't be transferred via the method the chief says would be a violation?
Why don't we just say that it's transferred in a legal way?
In a legal method.
So we don't, so we don't want to electronically transmit this, is what we're saying?
I don't know what it means.
I think the proper, if I could reframe it to help understand for everyone, it's really complicated when you're dealing with CIGIS information. As long as that information, from my understanding, doesn't source in the depository, that didn't come from there, we're good. That's my main concern.
And because the name wasn't, came from the individual, we should be good.
Okay.
And ultimately, the Clerk's Office was responsible for transmitting to the requestor, and they don't use police systems.
Okay, so we're good if we just use the standard motion?
Okay.
Make a motion, please?
Supervisor, I move to grant the appeal in full, giving the dog owner's identity to the Sam Bernstein Law Firm.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Great, thank you. Now, we're on to public comments for three minutes. I'll start online. Out here, let's see, we have, if any of the attendees online would like to make a motion, or I'm sorry, would like to make a comment, no motions. Please raise your hand electronically. I don't see any hands, no hands raised, no hands raised. Okay, great. Do we have anybody in the room would like to make a three-minute comment? And this is just your time for public comment, and the Board will get back to you with any follow-up if needed. Anybody like to please go to the podium, state your names?
George Miller, on the last meeting, best I remember, Mrs. Slavens made, I brought it to her attention on the water. They claimed they wanted us to quit sprinkling because the pressure was down. I went to several communities, talked to the chief of police, not chief of police, but fire chief, about a half a dozen municipalities, and their engineering department. The fire plug generally, twenty pounds of pressure, so they can get it out of the plug, the pumping truck when there's a fire. They have to have that. Usually, it can run forty or fifty. Then, when it gets to your house, you have a one-inch line that chokes it down. So evidently, your water lines you were talking about couldn't take the standard pressure of forty or fifty pounds. Evidently, they were bad lines. You can't have forty or fifty pounds of pressure in your house, most likely, because it choked down at the riser, at the street, each house. There's a one-inch copper line. I put a few of them in. So that's one thing. Back to Van Born Road. I'd like to know when there's going to be a cleanup over there possibly, and the weeds cut. That's been going on. The weeds are over six and eight foot high around the corners. The county's supposed to take care of that. Evidently, you don't have very good clout with the commissioner or the county commissioner for our district's not doing very well. Next, I'd like to address the ditches on Palmer Road I have many times. The guardrail just north of Palmer Road there, it's on a forty-five degree angle leaning in the ditch. So if somebody was to hit it, it'd just go in the six-foot ditch. I'd like to know if there's been, evidently, there's a roundabout going in at Sheldon and Palmer Road. I'd like to know, for example, I was living there at the time, there's an underground covert there, about eight-foot round. I want to know if they're going to put a bridge in there, because that covert probably won't hold heavy trucks when they get around that roundabout. And you also have a gas main there, regardless how big it is. So that covert pipe was put in, and there should be a weight limit on it. Next thing is, when you go down Geddes Road, many times going to U of M and veterans taking relation, I've seen the gravel train spill out, and that's a crick right there, so they hold maybe four or five hundred gallons of fuel oil, or not fuel oil, diesel oil. So when that goes in the crick, are you guys willing, since you're environmentally concerned about the green, have you ever considered that? Then you have to pump it, there's a big cost to that. You have to have an emergency truck come in and pump it on that.
Thank you, thank you.
You have, address the issue then, I'm up here.
Mr. Miller, thank you.
Okay.
Well, good evening again. Daniel McCausland, 328 Niagara Road, forty-three-year resident. I'd just like to start off in saying, I think I got to make a few comments here about the Board. You know, I was very excited when the Board changed three years ago. I was very excited when you guys got in. However, I just want to, I'm not here to criticize you, I'm here to give you a comment. We need more public engagement between the Board and the citizens. This room should be packed. In forty-three years, it seems it's always been the problem that the Board can never communicate with the citizens. And with you guys, I saw a change. I saw you truly involved. I saw you truly liked the community, you love the community, as we all do, we live here. But it seems to me, we don't have that interaction. It's just like on these topics about the Cherry Hill Village. I mean, if we could get up and say, hey, that's good, that's bad, what's going on? We don't, there's just, we're sitting here like it's a court and we're the spectators. There's no public engagement. That's got to change. It has to change somehow. Because what's going to happen, it's right back to us versus them. And I'm hearing this through the community. They got elected, it's us versus them, we're going to vote them out on the next election, don't worry, they're gone. That's not the way to have a community. We can't have this type of setup here and have a welcoming community. It's not working. I support you guys wholeheartedly. I know your efforts are in the community. Everybody that's assembled here, I think, has probably been the best it's been in forty-three years. But don't ruin it with the perception that nobody can speak, and that everybody is timed, and everybody is on this limit. And I got a timer running right now at one point five six seconds, and I got to be done by three, but then we're going to listen to the next thirteen minutes of pontification. That's not how it's done, ladies and gentlemen. It's done on how you were voted in. Open door, listening to the people. That don't mean we're going to be up here to berate you. We're having a conversation, just like with the village. I've attended all the master plan meetings at my time. I volunteered my time because I want to. I like to hear what's going on. I want to hear what's going on. Again, I keep talking about, just like this gentleman here said, we can't put eleven million dollars into an area that the main road going to it has eight-foot tall weeds. It's just a poor perception of this community. It's been written back in two thousand and three. It's a poor image of the community. The services that are provided are poor. So we have to get on that bandwagon somehow. Either we do them internally, we get the county to do them, we bill them back, we do something. But drive up and down the roads and just see what we're looking at. Okay, well there again, see, that cutoff is rude.
This is a business meeting, and that's why, public comment, you can talk after the meeting.
That's rude though.
During public comment.
That, and Marie, Ms. Hudek.
Mr. McCausland, we can talk after the meeting, but this is a business.
Okay, but I'm just going to tell you, that's not a welcoming community.
Thank you. We can talk after.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the room? I do want to let everybody know of a guest we have. Carrie, she is the President of the Northwest League of Women Voters, and I know that a lot of you are attending meetings for a reason.
The League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County, we observe many city councils, township councils, environmental commissions, school board meetings. We are here to observe and see what the public record is. We are not here to comment on any issues, and I am your Canton Observer, as I am a Canton community member.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from the staff?
I'll never pass up an opportunity. Just wanted to say we've had a great summer. This is week ten, we call it, for our summer camp programs. And I just wanted to publicly thank all the staff. I don't think people realize how many seasonal part-time staff it takes to offer the level of service and the amount of services and programs that we offer throughout the summer. So you all know that part-time staff are very important to us. We had a great summer, a great crew. It's nice to see us kind of back. We're back in full mode. So we had a great summer camp, great concert series this summer, so we just appreciate the community's support coming out to all the different events and visiting the parks. We've never seen more park usage than we are today, so it's excellent. We've got lots of action going on this weekend. We continue to have coffee at the Village Arts Factory every week. So if you haven't already enjoyed that, I suggest you go out Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight to noon, and participate. And then this weekend, I mentioned earlier, we'll have the Cherry Hill Village Festival. We've got a 5K running in the morning, still sign up for that. Two stages of entertainment, we got vendor booths, rally on Ridge, food trucks. We have a beverage tent, two beverage tent locations, actually. So two days of fun. The farmer's market is going to be on Ridge Road on Sunday morning, a little different than our week-to-week. So that's going to be kind of fun, and a twist on the farmer's market. So it's going to be a great weekend. We'll have a brunch Sunday morning available through Marichino's. We hope to see everybody out there this weekend. It's going to be a lot of fun.
That's sponsored by, we have a lot of sponsors of that. Want to list some of the sponsors?
We have a lot, yeah, there's, we've got a full schedule online available, and all of our sponsors are listed there. I won't go through the many of them that are listed here, but we've, lots of support from the community. This is going to be a great event.
Something for everybody.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I knew you'd say that.
The only thing I do want to mention, you know, is you mentioned Clerk Seeger's, Jade Smith is finishing up his career here and moving on to the township on the west side of the state. So it's been very exciting working with him. I've learned quite a bit. It's also great that, how he works with the Board and carrying forward your mission, your vision, and how you want the community to go. And I look forward to doing, continuing that same kind of work in the next four months or so. Keeping amnesty, carrying out what you guys want to see them doing, that department doing.
Thank you. Deputy Supervisor, anything?
I just want to echo Dave's sentiments about Jade. Definitely not excited to lose him, but very excited for his future in West Michigan. As somebody who has lived in West Michigan, it's a beautiful part of the state. I just want to thank Senator Paul Hanke and Representative Pury for coming yesterday to the township, to the boardroom, to make a check presentation to the Board for the fourteen million dollars in state funding that they were, and particularly Representative Pury was instrumental in securing for Canton Township. Those funds are going to go to fix roads that are deteriorating due to ASR in Canton and have been for decades. They're going to go to the construction of a fourth fire station here in Canton and the renovation of the old township hall for a youth center. So I just want to publicly thank them for the work that they did in Lansing and securing those funds.
Thank you. Do you want to read it? Clerk Seeger has a public comment in his email.
Yeah, I forgot. I had a public comment that was emailed to me, and I let it lapse, and I didn't read it out loud. The public comment is from David Gordon, and it says, "What happened to the paths at Summit on the Park? They get pushed back again." And that was the public comment. I think it's Heritage Park paths.
In our CIP plan.
Yeah, so we're working on, obviously, Veterans Way is underway right now. And the plan was, as soon as Veterans Way is finished, that they would move on to do some of the path work. So we got a lot to do between now and the end of the season, here the paving season, both in Heritage Park and at Pheasant Run Golf Course. So that's the plan. We're hoping they'll move on and be able to accomplish a lot of the work before the season's out. And whatever doesn't get finished, we'll pick up on the next season. But that's the plan, is to hopefully finish off the paths in Heritage Park.
Thank you. Board comments, Kate?
So first of all, I want to echo what Dave and Joe have said about Jade Smith, our Municipal Services Director. I wish him well. I'm going to miss having him here. He always had some, when I've had conversations with him, he's always had some good insights. Glad that Dave is here and that we have his capable hands to help us out in the interim. I also want to thank Representative Pury and Senator Paul Hanke. Fourteen million dollars is a lot of money, and we're very, very glad that it's coming into Canton. Yeah, we need that level of investment in our community. We think we're worth it. I also wanted to mention that last spring and into the summer, we had, the Board here had some coffee with the trustees at various coffee places throughout the township. And those were opportunities to speak to us on a more casual level and to have those conversations that can't be had in the boardroom when we're having a public meeting. And those will be starting up again this fall, so I hope that everyone will come out and see us. Sometimes they were not very well attended, so we would love to have more people come. And I think it's a fantastic opportunity to get to know us better and to learn more about what's going on in the township.
Thank you. I echo Trustee Borninsky's remarks about Director Smith and look forward to working with not-so-called Deputy Dave in the near future on municipal services. I wish Director Smith well. But the comment I wanted to make tonight was that this week I was, I had a need to go to the Secretary of State over at Joy Road and Lilly. And this is not a comment about the Secretary of State. I'm sure everybody has their thoughts on the Secretary of State. They were fine. But the fact that on my ride to the Secretary of State took me on completely repaved roads that I had no opportunity to ride on any road that was deteriorating on that journey. And I just think it's important to reflect, because people don't remember often what roads were in bad shape after they're fixed. And coming here tonight, it was the same. And especially because they just finished my portion by my home of Ford Road that's being repaved this year. So I'm looking forward to sometime in the next few months getting an update on the road program and perhaps an update on our PAZER score, which...
and perhaps an update on our Pazer score, which evaluates our roads and how much we've come up, because I think this community, we as a community have done incredible work on our roads in the last four years, so.
Well, I'll echo what both have said so far. Appreciate the funding that we are getting from the state Representative Pury and Senator Paul Hanke. Truly, we appreciate working with them. Another, and I wanted to also make a statement about Director Smith. He will be missed. He's done a lot of great programs, you know, educating folks on recycling, he started that, and that really helped us. Composting, so I could go on and on, so I look forward to working with you as well, but, you know, we will miss him. Also, it's wonderful to have the League of Women Voters here observing, we appreciate that, so thank you.
Tanya?
Okay, so I wanted to start off with, you know, wishing our Director Smith all the best on the west side of the state, and hoping that, you know, I don't want to say what everyone's saying, it was probably interim, our deputy director Norwood. But he's doing a great job. Every time I call him, if any citizen's concerned, or I connect him to a citizen who has, like, you know, who has come to me, they have very positive feedback, so I'm really appreciative of that. I also wanted to reiterate our trustee Borninski's comment about, this is a board meeting where we are in the process of, you know, passing RBAs, and we have we have a procedure to run this board meeting a certain way. You want to have more back-and-forth conversation with us. We do coffee hours once every month, and we have not done in the last two months, because it's summer and people are traveling around, and so we will start them again in fall, so please come and attend those coffee hours, and we are there for two hours, so if you want to pack the coffeehouse, you're welcome. And we are, at least, at least three to four of us are there during these coffee hours. I also, I also, I was thinking yesterday, as I was driving on Canton Center Road. Last year, everyone had issues saying Canton Center Road is being constructed, it'll be the same after the winter, but it has, it has lasted, and we are thankful for Pury for giving us, getting us $5 billion from the state for doing that. And really appreciative of that, and please, I will be volunteering as a, as a member of the Cultural Commission at one of the beer tents this weekend. For, I think it's Rally on Ridge? Or, I don't know, I our Cherry Hill Village Festival are one of the Rally on Ridge things, and I'm very excited about that. I've never volunteered at a beer tent before, so, thank you.
You'll enjoy.
Michael?
I've got a lot to say, always. This weekend is going to be very exciting. Not only do we have the, we'll start off the morning on Saturday with the Agent Orange 5K, of which I will be volunteering, I will not be running. Then we have the Cherry Hill Village Festival, which is going to be fantastic. And in Heritage Park, there's a Bollywood festival as well. And so I will be running from both of those events quickly. Because Harnik, who, somebody I went to school with, who I wrestled with at Canton High School, is the DJ, and he wanted to bring this festival back to Canton. Canton had a similar festival that we lost to Novi. And he was really adamant about bringing it home, which is really cool, because Canton is the third, has the third-highest Asian population of all communities in Michigan. And so anytime we can do an event that celebrates the entire community, promotes cultural diversity, it's huge, it's awesome. And so I was really happy that he would be able to do that. Appreciate Leisure Services for working with him on that. There's going to be a lot of activity this weekend. Today, we, you know, the Canton administration, we are mourning the loss of one of our members. Lori Davis passed away from engineering. Today was her funeral, yesterday was the viewing. I want to appreciate that Supervisor Graham Hudek went to the funeral today, I was unable to, but I went to the viewing yesterday. She worked in engineering and was a delight, and she is going to be missed, and leaves a very big hole in a lot of ways. And so it's never easy when somebody who works for the township passes away while they, you know, currently working for the township, so keep her family in your thoughts, please. And also keep engineering in your thoughts as well, because there's some sad folks up there. On top of engineering, we have a very busy engineering season. I was just thinking it is officially the five-year anniversary of the passage of the Rhodes Village. In August of 2018, voters decided that they wanted to do something about their bad roads. And they weren't just going to talk about truck weight, and they weren't just going to talk about material, and they weren't just going to talk about freezing and thawing, and they weren't just going to talk about warranties, they weren't just going to talk about contracts with the lowest bidder, and all the weird stuff you hear when people try to talk about why Michigan roads are so objectively awful compared to other states. Instead, we were just going to fix some roads. And I've seen how much money we have spent on roads, some of it from the village, some of it from the matching program locally, a lot of it from state appropriations and from county appropriations. I remember the days of Phil of Joy, when we, we thought we had fallen into a golden pot when we got $5 million for Lots Road. And we have gone well above that number at this point, when it comes to money brought in to Canton Township for fixing bad roads. And it is unfortunate, as Maslow says, that a need fulfilled ceases to be a motivator. So once you fix a road, nobody really cares anymore, because that road's fixed. So what about the other road that's not fixed, right? We move on quickly. But we have covered a lot of ground. Fixed a lot of road in Canton Township, and it is phenomenal. So I'm proud of that legacy, I'm proud of what we've done, I can't wait for that update, that five-year update. How we've improved our Pazer score. On top of that, you know, the board had created Zibouaz Nature Area, which is our first nature area designation, and we had called for the creation of the Canton Nature Society. We've been working diligently on the creation of the Canton Nature Society, it does have an active Facebook page, so if you want to like that and join that. We're really going to engage the community in having some ownership over that property and doing what we can to cultivate that area. And we've started initial meetings with the Local Impact Alliance, the Canton Community Foundation, about setting up the nonprofit status as well. So we'll have something to report to the board about that, and how we envision that to work in the future. That should be fantastic, really excited about that. 2024 will be a fun year when it comes to that. Appreciate the League of Women Voters is here, I was with Carrie. They've engaged the clerk's office with other voting rights organizations, because next year's voting is going to be different. We call it the choose-your-own-adventure of voting. You get to decide if you want to vote by mail, if you want to vote early, if you want to vote in person on Election Day. And what's super cool, if you're suspicious of voting by mail, you can take your mail ballot in, and you could submit it into the tabulator, which is really cool, if you want the convenience of voting by mail, but you're a little suspicious about giving that ballot to my staff, you get to put it into the tabulator. So this is really cool, and we're going to do a lot of voter education around that. And so we're being engaged right now by community groups who are really focusing on making sure that next year is a success, that voters are aware of how voting will look, and that voters' needs are met. So really, great to see you, Carrie. And yeah, that's kind of that. Rock and roll in the clerk's office, having fun, summer's been great, and this is going to be a fun weekend.
Thank you. So in what you said also, Laura Davis's family and a lot of our MSD people, they were at the funeral, and I take care of them as they suffer the loss of one of their coworkers. Also, I just want to say that it's going to be an exciting weekend. I'll only be able to go in the beginning, because I'm taking my son to his hockey but I also wanted to state that a township board meeting, which, or city board meeting, which is across 1,777 communities in Michigan, is a meeting for board members to conduct routine and important township business. It's a business meeting. And parliamentary rules follow to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak, and the board gets to conduct its business, and everybody has their own comment periods timed, and that is just the rules of the order. And I'd like to say that I know all of our trustees get emails and calls and letters, which they respond to. I know that when sometimes people talk to us after the meetings, we talk to them. We have coffee hours, so there are plenty of time and events that we talk to our residents, which is allowed. During this meeting, we will follow parliamentary procedures, because it is a business meeting where we speak to the public and we conduct the people's business, so that's why we do things the way we do. But other than that, I think everybody have a great weekend. We're going to have fun at some of the events that are happening. There's something, someone for, something for everybody. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Support. Made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you.